Hey, my name is Jason Pro, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I called to order this Monday, May 18th, 2020 meeting of the board. So some preliminary information to go through here because we're meeting remotely. This is an open meeting of the Northborough Board of Selectmen being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public hearing, public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The governor's order, which is posted at the top of our agenda for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by law, this meeting will have public comment. For this meeting, we're being conducted by the Zoom application. As indicated on the town's website, the posted agenda gives you several options for this meeting. If you wish to view or listen only, there's a live stream link. You can view it through cable access television channels, Horizon 30 and Charter 192. There's a telephone number 1312-626-6799. You can call in to listen that way, which will require meeting ID 82753610571, followed by password 251761. If you're viewing and listening and also wishing to offer public comment, you would use that same phone number and same meeting ID and password to connect. There's also a Zoom webinar link posted on there where you can connect to the Zoom through your Zoom application. And then again, enter the password 251761. To speak under public comment, it will be limited to three minutes per person. By phone, you'll have the opportunity to virtually raise your hand by typing star nine. If you want to be identified as someone who wishes to offer comments, please note if you're in only by phone, if you're admitted to the meeting for comment, then your phone number will be fully visible on the display. If you're connected by the Zoom application, you'll have a clickable button to raise your hand. And again, we'll see that as an indication that you wish to offer public comment. I'll return and repeat those instructions when we come to public comment section of our agenda. Since this is a Zoom meeting, all participants and attendees offering public comment should be aware that it's being recorded. Please be aware that other folks may see you. Please do not use the screen share option. Understand that anything you broadcast may be captured by a recording. This is being recorded. For the ground rules of the meeting, I just want to go through a couple of things. I will work down through the agenda. I will identify each topic on the agenda and introduce the speaker for that topic. After the speaker concludes their presentation, I will go down through the members of the board inviting each one to offer comment questions or motions. Board members, please hold until I call your name. And again, remember to mute your phone to or your computer when you're not speaking to suppress any unintended noise. And please remember to speak clearly in any way that helps us to generate accurate minutes. For any response that's asked of you, please wait for the chair to yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Members wish to engage in colloquy with other members of the board, please make that request through the chair. For public comment, for the circumstances where we ask for public comment, I as the chair will be admitting attendees to submit their public comment. We'll ask you to first state your name and address for the record and then once that's verified and you're in the meeting, you'll have three minutes to offer your comment. I will be timing that and give you a warning at the two minute and 32nd mark so that you're aware of how much time you will have. That concludes most of our preparations. I would just like to go through the members here who are the panelists or participants of the meeting to be sure that everyone is properly connected and that we have audio for everyone. So I'm Jason Pro, Chairman of the Board. Don Rand. Vice Chair Don, you're muted.
Present.
Thank you, Don. Tim Kalen, Clerk.
Present.
Leslie Ratan.
Present.
Julianne Hirsch.
Present.
We also have staff members, Town Administrator John Codere.
Present.
You have a Finance Director Jason Little.
Present.
Town Clerk Andy Dow.
Present.
DPW Director Scott Sharpentier.
Present.
We also have Fire Chief David Parenti and Director of MIS GIS David Kane, who are some of our technical specialists. Chief Parenti.
Present.
And Mr. Kane.
Present.
Thank you very much. And we also have Police Chief William Liver.
Present.
And Town Moderator Fred George.
Present.
Thank you very much. This meeting is also being streamed by Northborough Cable Access. And we have Dana Volkey, our Northborough Cable Access technologist here to help us with that. So I think we've completed all preliminary matter and we can now proceed with the agenda. And the first item is the approval of the April 27, 2020 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? I'm sorry, Don, we need a, you're muted. Still muted, Don. There it is.
Okay, I move we approve the equal 27, 2020 meeting minutes.
Second.
Second. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, all votes, I should mention, all votes are by roll call for remote meeting. I'll start with Julianne.
I.
Leslie.
I.
Tim.
I.
Don.
I.
And I vote I. So the minutes are approved unanimously. Next item is approval of the May 20, I'm sorry, May 7, 2020 meeting minutes. This was the public input session we had on COVID-19. Do I have a motion?
Chair, I move we approve the May 7, 2020 meeting minutes.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Again, this is a voice vote. Julianne.
I.
Leslie.
I.
Tim.
I.
Don.
I.
And I vote I. So the minutes are of May 7th are approved unanimously. The next item on the agenda. I have someone named Rick R I C. Well, pop in here. Some instruction chief, do I just want to allow to talk?
First thing I would do, Mr. Chairman, is allow him to talk. If it is him, then we can promote him.
Very good. Hello, Rick.
Yes. Hi, how you doing, guys?
Is this Richard Courier?
It is.
Very good. Thank you.
Rick Courier from 487 Green Street.
There you are. Very good. This is Rick Courier, American Legion to consider an application to change the officers and the manager for the All Alcoholic Club License for premises located at 402 West Main Street. We have the application. This is for the American Legion. I can get through my. Here we are. This is a change to the Officers Directors and the Manager of Record for Vincent F. Picard Post 234 for the All Alcoholic Veterans Club License Premises Located 402 West Main Street. New manager is Richard Courier, serves as current post commander. In addition, the Officers Directors are being changed. Richard Courier, President and Manager of Record, William Callahan, Vice President, Matthew Edwards, Treasurer, and James Clifford, the Clerk. So welcome, Rick. And please proceed.
Like I said, I'm Rick Courier from 47 Green Street. All the members and have been updated as far as the posters goes. Any questions for me at all or?
Any questions from the board? And seeing none, as part of the application Detective Sergeant Brian Griffin, as a matter of routine for these kind of things, runs background checks.
Yes.
All of the above checks out. Everything is fine, has no concerns. And you, Mr. Courier, are tip certified?
That's correct.
Very good. As far as I can see, everything's in order. Again, any questions from the board?
No.
Yep.
None.
Very good.
Doing Zoom, right?
Right, right. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the application as submitted by Vincent F. Picard Post Number 234 DBA American Legion to change the officers and the manager of record for other alcoholic veterans like club licenses for premises located at 402 West Main Street.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion, board members? Seeing none, again, a voice vote. Julianne.
I.
Leslie.
I.
Tim.
I.
Don.
I.
And I vote I also carries unanimously and the changes are approved. So.
Thank you for your time. Let's appreciate it.
Much.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Bye bye now.
Take care.
Okay, and the next item on the agenda. Here we are. Hello, is this Brad Miller?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Good night, Mr. Miller. Yep. So the next item on our agenda is Brad Miller of Miller Farms Incorporated. Consider an application for a common victual or license as submitted by Brad Miller doing business as Miller Farm Incorporated for premises located at 277 Main Street. And the board has the application. Mr. Miller, if you would, would you maybe just step through and give us a little background about what you'll be doing at the location?
Yeah, real quickly, and thank you very much for the opportunity. My, my wife and I live over in Upton, Massachusetts with three children, and I've been working in corporate America for 27 years, going in and out of Boston. I met Chuck Tombetta. Oh, hold on. Can you see me? Sorry about that.
Yep.
Yeah, no, I met Chuck Tombetta before COVID-19 and everything went down back in February. I got laid off from New Balance after being an executive there for 17 years. I was managing a $300 million business unit, all domestic manufacturing in the United States and, and one factory in Flimby, England. And my team was about product and product management, consumer engagement, how to like really create great opportunities and how to make people happy. And I had 1,600 employees between the United States and over in England that were relying on my team to create a great product strategy to fill the factories. That really kind of hit home to me. And when I got laid off a year ago, and I couldn't seem to find a job and then COVID-19 hit, I told my wife, I said, you know what? I can't commute three hours a day to Boston anymore. And I've got these wonderful children that play hockey locally, and I know a lot of people in Northborough. We've served on the hockey board for Starbucks for four and a half years cumulatively. My kids play a really high level of hockey and baseball. My in-laws live in the town. Well, not my in-laws, but my relatives live in the town and they're teachers in the local community and middle school. They're principals for Stowe and, and and from Marlboro. And I just said, you know what? This beautiful building's over here. I want to buy it.
Yep.
And so I met Chubb, we talked, and I just said, Chubb, you know, I want to, I want to bring it back to what you made it. Because I used to drive Route 20 home, coming back from Lawrence every day from, from the factory. And I'd see this beautiful building with flowers and ice cream and saw people having a good time. And I'm like, you know, Christmas trees and pumpkins. And I'm like, I'm in the last third of my career. I'm like, this is exactly what I want to do. I want to bring happiness to people. I want to make people smile.
And Can you tell us a little bit about the operation that you intend to run here?
Yeah, so it's going to be the same thing. I mean, I've been really trying to bring it back to its roots. It's been closed since 2018. I poured tons of money into it the last five weeks. Anybody that's driven by has seen what I'm doing, right? I mean, the building's immaculate. I cleaned all the hardscape. Inside is even cleaner than the outside by a mile. And then I'm going to run the ice cream shop again. I want to bring my version of Beesers back. I want to have the garden center, the garden center open. I've got I can't, I have to tell you to be honest, I'm not short on applicants.
Yep.
I've got tons of kids from Elgonquin that want to work for me. So what I need right now is I need the code, the, the, the permit to be able to open up. I was talking with Casey. I've had my, my fire inspections done, my building inspections done. Casey was like, it's a layup. But then Casey's not there anymore. So I'm really struggling with the Board of Health. I need the Board of Health to walk through. I've done my surf safe with allergy. I have to have the proctor do the test, but I passed yesterday. I worked all weekend on it. And I just need the other permit so I can open. I'd love to open by next Tuesday. And I think the town is dying for.
Great.
And they want it bad.
Yes, well, I think, yes.
It's happy, right? And what my plan is when I open, just for everybody on the phone, I'm sorry, everybody on the Zoom video, I'm a drive-through to start. I'm not opening windows. I'm going to have, just like Chick-fil-A, I'm going to split my parking lot into two lanes. They're going to drive around the building to come out the backside. We'll put a happy box in the back of their car with ice cream in it and let them go. Right now, I'm not opening windows.
Great. Excellent. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions from members of the board? Leslie.
Yeah, first of all, this is incredibly exciting. I think it's great news. Everybody is thrilled. People have been talking about that location ever since it closed. And you are right, they, they had put a lot of money into it toward the end of that. And it's a beautiful building. It's a great location. It's just a, it's just a wonderful, happy spot. And I like your spirit about the whole thing and wanting to kind of bring it back to what it was. And I, again, people have been talking about it for a long time and are absolutely thrilled to have heard mutterings that it's been purchased and that you would like to do that. Did you say something about hot dogs? And I miss what you said besides ice cream.
Yeah. So at one point, Beesers hot dogs were here.
Yep.
I would love to do it when time, the time is ready. It's not on my priority list. It's way down on the bottom of the list. When everything like COVID-19 finally gets back to a sense of stability and that we all know how to handle and how to deal with public safety the right way, then I will look to open that window, but that window's closed. My only focus right now is to get flowers up that are grab and go, pots and plants, hangers, and ice cream. As I've already told you, I've been checking on every ice cream shop, you know, five, 10 minutes north of here and 10 minutes south of here for the 20 minutes south of here for the last six weeks. Everybody's playing a different game. I don't want to, my, my primary concern is first and foremost the public and the people that work for me. So I'm going to do a drive-through and we're going to start there. I'm going to have plants that'll drop in the back of the car and party boxes with whatever you want for your ice cream. It'll be in a cup and you can take it, you can go. But the hot dogs are way down. You know, that's way down on the, on the to-do list right now.
Makes sense. We're thrilled. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm really excited. And I can't tell you how many people in the town are really cheering.
Oh, yeah.
Excited.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions from members of the board? Seeing none. It's recommended that the victual license be granted with conditions that the licensee receives satisfactory inspections by the building, fire, and health departments. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to approve the application as submitted by Brad Miller doing business as Miller Farm for a common victual or license for premises located at 277 Main Street with the condition that the licensee receives satisfactory inspections by the building, fire, and health departments.
Second.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, again, a voice vote. Julianne.
I.
Leslie.
I.
Tim.
I.
Don.
I.
And I also vote I. So it carries unanimously. Mr. Miller, you have your license subject to the conditions as expressed. So.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. And have a great night, guys. And I can't wait to serve your ice cream.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Take care. Be healthy.
You too.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Very good. And next up, we have Fred Georgetown Moderator for the postponement of the May 27, 2020 annual town meeting. Mr. Moderator, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As everyone knows, the Commonwealth has not released any municipality's ability to have a meeting of more than 10 people. That being said, and I anticipating that that will happen anytime really soon, I am recommending consideration of a a declaration to continue the town meeting to June 22, 2020. That's a 30-day extension. We are able to make 30-day extensions as we did at the last time we made the declaration. And hopefully by June 22nd, we'll have a better understanding and a clearer picture of where we are and what we can do.
Very good. Thank you. John Codere, Town Moderator, anything to add?
You're the Town Moderator now.
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Moderator, so this is obviously something that we really have to do. There's no, there's really no alternative. There are some provisions that are being brought forward for representative town meetings to potentially participate remotely. And certainly if you're a council manager, form of government, you can act through Zoom at your legislative body. We operate under the open town meeting structure. And as a moderator pointed out, we cannot have a meeting of 10 or more folks. So this by necessity has to be postponed. Now, the date of June 22nd was chosen. It's not exactly 30 days, but it is within the 30-day window that is open for the moderator to choose. And I think it's our last chance. If we're going to have a town meeting prior to the end of the fiscal year, that will be the date. If the governor does not lift his ban and we cannot meet safely, at that point, we more than likely will move forward to use the legislation that would allow us to move forward with a 112 budget. But at this point in time, we are moving forward and we are preparing to have a town meeting on June 22nd. Unlike your meeting on April 27th, when we postponed to May 27th, we said right out of the gate, not a real date. That's the limit how far the moderator could postpone. June 22nd, we're planning as if town meeting is going to take place on that date. So we're not just punting. We're going to be later on in your agenda tonight discussing some of the procedures necessary to bring a budget into into focus for actual action either on June 22nd or by the Board of Selectmen at their regularly scheduled meeting to adopt a 112 budget to move forward. Those are really our only options. But we are preparing and we are putting budgets and revised warrant articles together for actually holding town meeting on the 22nd. But it remains to be seen whether or not we can do that safely.
Thank you very much, John. Members of the board, any questions or comments? Leslie?
Yeah, I just want to just reiterate. So we, this is something that we just, we have to do. And without any further specific knowledge, we, well, first of all, we have to schedule it one way or the other, right? So we're using this 30-day extension. But I don't want to, I know it sounds like we're preparing for it, but I just want to make sure that everybody knows that obviously if, if nothing changes with regard to public gatherings, then the next step would be what then in terms of town meeting, just the next, would we have one? Would it be in July? Would you just keep kicking it? Or what happens then?
Yeah, I think the, the real critical issue with town meeting is, is the, is we're going to roll past the end of the fiscal year, which is
Right. Yeah.
June 30th. So the critical piece of the town meeting warrant is the fiscal plans that allow us to continue to spend to provide the services and that we, that we we need for our operations. So basically what would happen is we would pass through the emergency legislation, a 112 budget, proceed accordingly, and then we would continue to postpone town meeting until it becomes safe to conduct one essentially. And, you know, as you know, not to get ahead of ourselves here, but you know, the, the governor did release or his advisory committee did release their report in terms of a reopening, phased-in reopening of the economy. Now, town meeting wasn't specifically called out in that. And I think we got a little more than a taste of, there'll be four phases and guidance will come out about subsequent phases that we don't have, you know, at the moment. So I might be on a conference call tomorrow with the Lieutenant Governor, the managers, and we will be, I'm sure this will be a primary topic of conversation. Where does town meeting fit into this phased reopening? Because we didn't see anything specific pertaining to it. So so again, we're in a holding pattern based on the state of emergency and the prohibition against gatherings of 10 or more. And that's where we're going to remain until until things change materially or we can, we can do this safely.
Yeah. Okay. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Leslie. Board members, any other comments or questions? Hearing that, I'll, I'll just mention that certainly I'm in, in favor of this. We're trying to push it out to the safest possible date while still trying to have an opportunity to reel in town meeting before the end of the fiscal year. So if we hit that sweet spot, that will be great. But it gives us a little more time to see how things play out. And so with that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote and consultation with the Town Moderator under the authority of Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020 to postpone the May 27, 2020 annual town meeting to June 22, 2020 at 7:00 P. M.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Again, this is a voice vote. And this is essentially the Selectman's affirmation of the Town Moderator's decision to postpone town meeting. Julianne. Leslie.
I.
Tim.
I.
Don.
I.
And I also vote I. So it carries unanimously. Town meetings postponed to June 22nd. Thank you very much, Town Moderator Fred George. Appreciate that, your assistance here.
Thank you so much. And if you don't mind, I do need to run off to another meeting. But I do thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, Fred.
Thanks, Fred.
Next item on the agenda is Andrew Dowd, Town Clerk, to set the polling hours for June 30th, 2020 Town Election Day. So Andy, take us through.
Evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you. As you know, the board at a previous meeting voted to postpone the town vote to June 30th. Now that that's been done, at this point, the board will need to execute an updated warrant and within the warrant are the hours of the polling place on Election Day. Which is why I'm here to speak with you tonight. It'd be my recommendation that you consider reducing those hours due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. The, just as a bit of background, as I mentioned, when we postponed the election, the recent act passed by the legislature allows for all voters to vote by mail for the local election, the local municipal elections this spring. To date, we've had already about 225 people submit to vote by mail. So the volume's been, been pretty good. The law does require that we have a minimum of four hours of in-person polling hours on Election Day. And the polling place has to be open no later. And the polling place has to be open no later than twelve noon. I've surveyed some of our surrounding communities. The town of Westboro, for example, is just opening for four hours for their town election. The town of Southborough is opening for eight hours. It's my recommendation that we compromise a bit and open the polling place from twelve noon. Until seven P M. On election day, that will still give people a fairly significant opportunity to come and vote in person if they choose. Including hours which should typically be after work for some folks. If they wish to do that after their workday, assuming they're back to commuting, we'll hope at that point. And it also will give folks ample notice if they're unable to come during those hours on June thirtieth, that the mail-in ballot. Is available and now will, now that the hours are defined, it will. Give people the opportunity to make that decision if in fact they wish to go to vote in person that day during those hours. Or submit the mail-in request and handle it that way. So that's my proposal to the board and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Members of the board, any questions? Tim.
Andy, thanks for, for putting all this together. My, my only question is, is. Do the hours have to be consecutive? I just ask because usually when I go to vote, it's real busy in the morning and then there's a lull over the course of the afternoon and then it's real busy after work.
There is nothing in the law that requires them to be consecutive. I did give that a little bit of thought there. I have seen a few proposals. Obviously, everyone around the state is dealing with, with this issue and the, and the COVID nineteen concerns. I've seen one or two instances where they opened the polls in the morning and then took a break and also included a thorough cleaning during that break and opened again in the afternoon. Certainly an option that just does extend the day for the, for the staff and it's going to be challenging to. To get staff to be there. We're obviously going to ask folks to put themselves at a bit more risk by coming that day. And being exposed to the public. So my recommendation with the twelve to seven was to try to give folks the best opportunity without. Being there. A typical, the typical day would be seven A M. To eight P M. So we're certainly willing to be open whatever hours the board wishes. I just think we should keep in mind the, you know, the concerns for the, the health and safety of the workers there that day.
Our part, I, I agree. I, I knew, I was thinking that there, there was going to be logistical issues with splitting up the day like that. I didn't even think of the. Cleaning in between, but that's a very good point. Thank you. Thank you very much, Andy.
Sure.
Leslie.
Yeah, thank you very much, Andy. I, I, I like this particular range of hours because not knowing quite what people's office situations are going to be. We're going to be able to catch people who are still home during the day or people who are commuting. And can make it home by six or seven in order to vote. So it definitely sounds reasonable to me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Julianne?
Hi, yes, thanks, Andy. Um, what, what would be the last date? Do you think that people could call in and reasonably expect their absentee ballot to be, you're mailing them to them usually, right?
Yes, the ballots have to be mailed and that's a good question, although we've covered it a bit before, it's important for folks to. To know those facts. So basically we have to mail the ballots out. So they can request the ballot up until noon time the day before, so noon on the twenty ninth. It's potentially possible for us to physically get the ballot mailed out that day and for them to receive it. Next day on the thirtieth, if everything works perfectly with the postal service and we can, we can handle that on our end. Obviously, the sooner we get that request, the better. We're fortunate where it's a town election, the vast majority of the ballots are being mailed within Northborough. Most kids who are away at college or home, you know, other situations which would have ballots going out of town. Typically, right now aren't the case, although we still have a few of those, some from what I've seen in the, in the requests that come in. So, you know, people need to definitely give it, I would recommend at least a week in advance to be safe. Because it also takes some work on our end to get those out. It's a labor intensive manual process to, you know, get the ballot package together. And we obviously have to go through verification processes with the request and it's not just as simple as sending a letter out to, to somebody, so. The sooner the better is always my message, but up until noon the day before is what the law allows for.
So if, if I waited until the last minute, um, I'd have to bring my ballot to the poll, Leslie.
Yes, that would be the only way, obviously, and that's, that's perfectly fine. You can hand carry it back on election day, but it has to be received by the time. Polls close on election day for us to be able to legally count it. So that's a good point that the ballot can be returned. You know, in person, it can be placed in the drop box at town hall. So there's a couple other options to avoid the mail.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Julianne. I just want to ask for clarification, Andy, and I, I ask this because in phrasing your question, Julianne said something about calling town hall. I just want to be clear about what the process is for someone who wants to obtain their, their ballot for mail-in.
Certainly. So the, the law requires the voter to make a written request for the ballot. And that can either be by utilizing the form that's posted multiple locations on the website. We'll be pushing all that information out again. Or it can just be a simple written note. Either the form or the note has to be signed by the voter. That's key. That will be able to honor their requests. So it does take a written request, although that written request can be returned. By email, you just take a picture of the, of the form or note or scan it and send it back. We're happy to take them by email, but. We do, we are required to have the signature on the request, so that's the. Either mail in a request, drop in the drop box, email a request, you can't call. So thanks for clarifying that.
Any other questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve and execute the June thirtieth, twenty twenty town election warrant as submitted by Town Clerk Andrew Dow.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This is a voice vote once again. Julianne. Leslie.
Hi.
Tim.
Hi.
Dawn.
Hi.
I will also vote aye, so that carries. Thank you very much, Andy. Appreciate the information and you can proceed with the election day as, as the hours are defined now. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andy.
Next item on the agenda is the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget update. Town Administrator John Codere.
Thank you very much. So probably the best way to start out with this is explaining what the purpose of, of this update is. So tonight is not a, it's not a public hearing. It's not a, I don't have a full-blown PowerPoint presentation for you. It's a general update to the board so that you understand where we are in the process and what decisions have been made to date and what decisions still remain to be. Made. So there is no vote or action required of the Board of Selectmen this evening. As you know, through the normal budget process. The Board of Selectmen's role is really on the very front end and then on the very back end. On the front end, usually it takes place in December where we do the policy discussions in terms of setting the table for. The targets for the overall budget increases and the tax impact. We usually do that in December. And then the process goes through working with the departments, my office, and then the Appropriations Committee holds. Weekly meetings to review the various departmental budgets. Ultimately, the Appropriations Committee then makes a recommendation regarding. The budget expenditures to the Board of Selectmen and ultimately for town meeting. And so the Board of Selectmen, by the time you take up your recommendations for the warrant. And all of the capital and operating budget expenditures. You have the benefit of the recommendations of the Financial Planning Committee, which looks at the capital items. And the benefit of the Appropriations Committee that looks at all the operating budgets. And so it's based on the work that they do. In terms of reviewing budgets that ultimately the Board of Selectmen then makes their recommendations with regard to town meeting. So we went through that process, but of course with the emergency and the change in the economic outlook. The work that was completed, leading up to your meeting on March twenty third, where we had a level service budget presented. We knew that we were going to need to come back and, and revise that. So since the, your meeting on the twenty third of March, we've been working, the superintendent, the departments, myself. And the financial team have been working to gather information and to revisit all of the departmental budgets. And as you've heard me say over the last month or so, it's been very difficult because information is severely lacking. We don't have our typical closeout in terms of our data. We have absolutely no, and I don't mean little. No, we have zero input from the state with regard to state aid and their budget process. In part because they don't have the guidance that they're waiting for and, and seeking from the federal level, particularly as it pertains to. Coronavirus relief funds, which we'll speak to in a few minutes. So what we have done, working with the Finance Director, Jason Little, myself, Superintendent and the balance of the team. Is we have, we've looked at all the scenarios. We've spent since March, like everybody has. We looked at, is this going to be a sharp V, you know, down and back up by the end of the summer, everything's going to be fine? Is it going to be a Y V? Is it going to be a U? I'm talking about the economic recovers. Is it going to be a W where we start and stop? I think that remains to be seen in terms of the economy. But we're just getting to the part now where the governor today released his reopening four-phased plan. And it's more of an outline than a specific plan because there's severe detail that's lacking. Lots of guidance to be announced, but essentially it's a slow reopening. With the caveat that should we see a spike in positive tests and people getting ill? That we more than likely will see a contraction of that phased reopening. So it's in that spirit that we look at this and we're saying, you know. We don't see this being a fast recovery. We see the cuts very significant. And we see them lasting for a, at least through the fiscal year with multiple fiscal year repercussions. So every recession that we've been through and we've planned for is typically. Three or four years down and three or four years back up is a, is a profile that we see. The last recession, as you know. Was three or four years down in a very slow, I refer to it as a check mark. It dropped down quickly and the recovery was long and slow. So at this point in time, though, just focusing on fiscal twenty one. We've been working with the superintendent to put together a revised financial plan for town meeting. That essentially is looking at a worst-case scenario. And so for us right now, that worst case, worst-case scenario. Assumes a seventeen percent reduction in fiscal twenty one state aid, which is approximately one million dollars. Now, the Mass Taxpayers Foundation recently completed analysis and they're projecting and forecasting a fourteen percent. Reduction to state aid. We're going with seventeen percent because over the last three recessions. That is the single largest drop in state aid that we've seen in one cycle. So it's a million dollars. If you listen to, there's some legislators that are out kind of giving some general. Guidance when asked, what should communities plan for? And by the way, there is no formal guidance out there whatsoever. No, let, nobody from the state level will tell you what to budget. All they'll say is, there's a range of forecasts. And it's potentially lost somewhere between fourteen and twenty percent of state revenues, which could translate into. You know, a fifteen to twenty percent loss in state aid. Assuming, again, there's a lot of caveats and a lot of unknowns in this budget process. But assuming there's no stimulus funds and assistance coming from the federal government, which we know will not be the case. But regardless, for our planning purpose, we're assuming a seventeen percent reduction state aid of fiscal twenty one. The other areas that we're assuming a big hit in is in our local receipts. We're assuming a fourteen percent reduction, which is six hundred and thirty one dollar. Reduction. And that, when you look at local receipts. It's taxes, state aid, local receipts. Those are our three biggest, our three biggest revenue sources. Taxes are about eighty percent. State aid is eight to ten percent and local receipts are five or six percent and they fluctuate depending on a, on. What they're doing relative to one another. But our local receipts are things like motor vehicle excise, hotel meals, building permits. They tend to be the elastic revenues that move with the economy. Now, we know this medically induced coma. That we have put our economy in right now means we have seen almost a complete drop off in hotel and meals tax. For starters, we've seen reductions in, in the. Building permit activity because building has slowed down and stopped under the shutdown. And there's a lag for motor vehicle excise, but generally speaking, when the economy goes into recession, people tend not to buy new cars. So the worst loss of motor vehicle excise that we saw in any one year is about eleven percent. So we're carrying right now for local receipts about a fourteen percent reduction. If you look at what neighboring communities and area communities are doing, most of them are telling their Boards of Selectmen and their finance committees. That if we need to plan for and bring you a budget that includes the numbers like we're talking about here. They would be looking at very significant layoffs and reductions in services. Now, as I said before, we're in a little better position than most communities because we have planned for the recession. And we have put policies in place over the last ten years that have put us in a, in a good spot. Doesn't mean it's not going to be difficult, but we are in better shape than most. So the big caveat and the big unknown with regard to the fiscal twenty one budget is the federal assistance. And how, if and how that's going to get down to us. And so I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back to that at the end of, of this presentation. Because it's really the wild card factor. Essentially, the federal government earmarked. Two point seven billion dollars for the state of Massachusetts. We just found out about three business days ago. That Northborough's allocation under the state formula for how they're going to distribute some portion of that is about one point three million dollars. Now, the rub here is, we were talking today as a financial team, we feel like we're, we're crawling through the desert. Dying a thirst and there's an icy glass of water just out of reach for us. That icy glass of water is this Corona relief fund. For one point three million dollars that's dedicated or earmarked for the town of Northborough. The problem is, it is very, very narrowly construed how it can be used. It can only be used for direct expenses associated with fighting COVID nineteen. So things like P P E, protective gear, equipment, additional expenses. So we've gone through the process so far, we're somewhere around, we're, we're south of a hundred thousand dollars in terms of. Expenses that we could legitimately would fall under that, that category. So the lion's share of the money is sitting there and we cannot access it. Now, the same is happening at the state level. The state is frustrated because they cannot use the two point seven billion dollars for revenue replacement. So while it helps with the direct expenses that they've incurred relative to managing the COVID nineteen. Pandemic emergency, their real need is for just general economic revenue replacement, just like it is for us. And so somewhere along the lines, that money will become available. Whether or not that money. Whether or not that money gets. Revised in terms of the rules surrounding its use and we're allowed to use it for revenue replacement, the state's allowed to use it for general expenses. So that money's just sitting there. Now, if you've been watching and reading in the papers, the House passed an additional. Coronavirus relief package and it went to the Senate and it was dead on arrival. Now, that package was specifically. Tailored, a good chunk of it for state and municipal revenue loss replacement. So there were a lot of other things in it as well, and there was some thought that maybe that was going to come and be available to us by the end of May. That's gone. The Senate has made it clear that it's not going to move forward despite what the House has done. That's gone. So forget about that. We're still talking that there's one point three million dollars earmarked for the town of Northborough. Sitting in a fund that we can only apply very. that we can only apply very extremely limited number of expenses towards. So that's the situation that we face today. And so we are planning and we have brought, working with the superintendent, budgets together that essentially meet this worst case scenario. And so I want to talk a little bit about that. And specifically tonight, although I'm going to make reference to the K to eight school budget, the high school, regional high school budget and assessment and the general government budget. What I'm gonna talk about primarily tonight is the general government budget because here's where things stand. The K to eight budget, last Thursday, the superintendent presented to the school committee a reduced budget, which has a one percent increase. It was a three point one five increase, if you remember, for level service. He's bringing, he's brought forward a revised budget to one percent. The school committee, the K to eight school committee has approved that. I'm here tonight, we'll talk about the general government budget. On Wednesday, May twentieth, the superintendent is meeting with the regional high school to talk about their revised budget dropping down to, from a, from a little over three percent budget to a one and a half percent budget. And that's gonna impact Northborough's assessment. And so based on the action that takes place on Wednesday, we'll know what the high school budget is and what our assessment is. So bringing it back, I want to talk about the general government side of budgets, so the non-school departments, police, fire, DPW and all the town office administration. So one of the issues in trying to bring forward a, a worst case budget for you is that on the general government side of the ledger, we carry all the expenses for health insurance for all municipal employees. So that includes the K to eight school employees. And we carry the pension costs for non-teaching school employees and the general government employees. And so we're trying to fit everything. And as you know, we have had over a decade plus of a revenue sharing model between the K to eight schools and the general government town departments. And in essence, in essence, that revenue sharing model is that we kind of see what we have for resources and both budgets are allowed to go up a proportionately similar amount. And so that target amount that we've been working on and talking about and trying to get to for over the past month or so, working with the superintendent, is about a one percent budget. Now, the only way we can get there is to bring some limited additional one-time revenues into the operating budget. And so the proposal and the package that we've put together is to take the increases, not the full amount, but just the increases for the health insurance and the pension costs. Because they apply to all of the employees, not, in fact, health insurance, two thirds of the health insurance budget is attributable to the K to eight school employees. So on my side of the budget, I can't cut enough out if I have to also absorb the pension and the health insurance costs for the K to eight employees. I can't cut that out and have parity. And so having conversations with the superintendent, the logical thing for us to recommend to you is that those, those increases be pulled out and that they be funded with free cash. And so those total, and these are just the increases, they total three hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. And those would be funded by postponing some of our capital projects that we were planning to do at town meeting in April. So assuming that the increases for health insurance and pension kind of get pulled out and set aside, the K to eight budget and the general government budgets are able to go up one percent and live within this worst case scenario, assuming no additional funds become available from the state or the federal government. So this is our worst case scenario and we have actually put together budgets that will, will get us there. So now, I'm gonna talk now just about the general government side of the budget. So in order for us to get to a one percent, there's a lot of moving parts here. And, and there are a lot, I'm trying not to give too many figures. What I want to convey to you is a general sense of how we're meeting this extraordinary challenge that we're being faced with right now. So the one percent target, we looked at a bunch of different things, a bunch of different options and to drop below that one percent increase would mean significant layoffs and reductions in services. And so trying to meet these reductions in revenues while maintaining to the extent possible core services, that's that kind of one percent target. So in order to do that, on the general government side of the budget, the non-school departments, we've had to cut four hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars out of the existing budget. And before anybody thinks that this was an easy exercise or that this is fluff, this was a very long, very difficult process that took the coordination and cooperation of every, every department head to get here. And, and we are foregoing some things that we, we desperately need. But the four hundred and twenty seven thousand dollar reduction in, in expenditures falls into roughly five categories. The first is personnel expenses and there's two hundred and sixty six thousand dollars in cuts there. And so we're doing things like we're eliminating the vacant DPW, assistant DPW director position. We have been fighting to get in a phased way a facilities manager for years. That position is being eliminated. We're cutting back the new hours, expanded hours at the library, Thursday night hours, we've had to reduce those. We also unfortunately are going to need to do some limited furloughing of some staff and potentially some relatively minor, it's not minor to the people impacted, but some, some reductions in, in staff. But we're looking at two hundred and sixty six thousand dollars there roughly. We're reorganizing the assessors' office, that's gonna save just under thirty three thousand dollars, bringing some, some just a different way of, of bringing some field work back inside of the office. We've cut a little over seventy seven thousand dollars from basically all the supply and services lines throughout the budget. And in your memo, you have detailed list of all of these individual line item cuts. And for the viewers at home or those following along, this memo that was provided to the board that has this detail is available on the town administrator's website. On the, on the left-hand side, it'll say fiscal twenty twenty one revised budget update with today's date. We also have eliminated virtually all conferences, training and travel. That saves just about twenty nine thousand dollars. And then we postponed out of police, fire, DPW, some operating budget capital and equipment expenditures. So that's a little over twenty seven thousand. So all that together is a reduction of about four hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. So in the long run, we need to replace equipment. In the long run, we need the staff. In the short run, you know, we will do without some things. But I just want to stress, this is not fluff and in the long run, we, we need a facilities manager. I can tell you that right now. But in terms of our ability to bring a budget in, meeting this worst case scenario, it's a vacant position as opposed to laying off a position that somebody is occupying. That's the path we, we chose to take. So now let me just come back. So right now, sitting here, and again, we found out about the coronavirus relief fund. So the state of Massachusetts got two point seven billion dollars, as you heard me say. They only three business days or so ago decided that they're going to release a little over five hundred million dollars of that to the municipalities. And they distribute it through a formula that's based on your population. And so that's how the one point three million dollars of coronavirus relief funds from the federal government got allocated to the town of Northborough. But again, we'll be able to, you know, again, submit for reimbursement for some of the direct costs. But we cannot use it for what we desperately need it for the most, and that is replacement of lost revenues. So right now, the state, most states are lobbying and requesting the federal government come back, revisit their coronavirus relief fund, the existing one, not the one they were just debating last week and decided to hit the pause button on. Come back to this and allow it to be used for any municipal purpose. If that happens, we're gonna be in a very different, a very different place. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about now the process moving forward. So, so basically this K to eight school budget has gotten to a one percent budget increase. The, the general government side is down to tonight, as of today, a one percent budget increase. The high school budget's going down to one point five percent and our assessment should drop to two point three percent. Assuming the school committee votes to go along with that budget reduction on Wednesday. So now we sort of have the package in the makings of a, an overall budget package that needs to all be brought together to see where we stand. What is the tax impact going to be? What is the, what is the impact on our, our new, we have to look at our reserves and our reserve calculations, all of these things. So in the memo that I provided to you on the last page, May twentieth, so this Wednesday, regional school committee will take up the vote on their budget. Then we'll know what our assessment is. On May twenty seventh, next week, the financial planning committee is scheduled to meet and they're going to vote on a revised capital budget. This is where I said we freed up some additional available funds to bring in to offset the health insurance and the pension costs. So that's gonna be taking up by the financial planning committee next Wednesday and we're going to postpone several pieces of equipment and, and this will affect multiple articles on the town meeting warrant as it currently exists. So the financial planning committee will take that up and hopefully on Wednesday recommend the revised capital budget that we've, as staff have put together. And that ultimately will come back to the board of selectmen for, for consideration. So that's Wednesday, the twenty seventh. On Thursday, May twenty eighth, the appropriations committee now is convening. And they're going to review the revised K to eight budget, the one percent budget we just talked about. The Algonquin Regional High School revised budget and assessment as well as the general government one percent revised budget that we, that we just discussed tonight. And now, because there are a lot of moving parts and we need to bring this all together and it's, it's more important now than ever before, I think that all the boards and committees get on the same page. We have a history every December of getting the K to eight schools, financial planning, appropriations and the board of selectmen all together in a joint meeting. We typically do this in December. We give you kind of a state of the town, a state of the economy and a forecast. So you understand the full context of the decisions that are being made for the upcoming budget. What I'm proposing is that we do that on June fourth. So on June fourth, bring everybody together in one, in one meeting. And that's when I will do a full presentation on the entire budget, the reserves, the debt, the, some forecasts and get a full sense of where we stand. I don't know by then if we'll have any additional information regarding the federal assistance. But as I said at the outset of this discussion, we are moving forward on a worst case scenario that leaves the town of Northborough with a balanced viable budget for June twenty second, if we're allowed to have town meeting, that, that takes into consideration everything that I just discussed. So now, let's talk about what happens if something evolves in terms of, if we wind up with some federal assistance. If coronavirus relief fund is modified and that one point three million or some portion of it becomes available to us for revenue replacement, or if the House and the Senate get together, as they have indicated they will, and, and put together another relief package designated in part for state and local governments, then those funds will become available to us over the next several months. But here's what we need to be prepared to do as a municipality. We need to be prepared to adopt a budget. And that budget needs to be balanced legally. And that budget needs to be viable in the event that we don't see additional funds coming available to us. Now, sitting here today, I don't know that there's anybody on the board of selectmen that doesn't think that we will get some form of assistance from the state and feds. The money's sitting there and they're talking about appropriating more money. So I don't know how much it's gonna be. I don't know when it's gonna become available and I don't know when, what the strings or constraints on that funding will be. But I can tell you that sometime between June and when we set the tax rate in November, funding is going to become available. When that funding becomes available, we will have to have another discussion about how it gets used. That money can be used to reduce the one-time revenues that we put in the operating budget. That money can be used to reduce the tax impact on the residents. And that money can be used to, to just do general revenue replacement and replenish, if we choose to, some of the things that are cut out of the budget at this stage of the game. So in the grand scheme of things, in my opinion, the town of Northborough, because of its prior planning, is in, is in much better shape than most. If you just read the paper, the scenario that I just outlined for you, a seventeen percent reduction in state aid and a fourteen percent loss of local receipts, that's a disaster for most communities. So what you're seeing a lot of communities do is they're just not even trying to have a town meeting. They're postponing and they say they're gonna postpone their town meeting until September or October. Because those stimulus funds or those coronavirus relief funds from the feds, from the federal government, they can't even imagine trying to put a budget together at this stage of the game without those funds. It would require massive layoffs. So the problem here is those funds aren't available. We don't know when they're gonna become available. We don't know when they're gonna get clarity on those. And so we also don't know if we're going to have town meeting on June twenty second. Now, the, whether or not we have a town meeting on June twenty second is more a factor of whether or not it's safe to do so, less a factor that we can't possibly have a town meeting because, because the financial team can't bring a balanced budget in for your consideration. We have done yeoman-like work. The superintendent, I cannot say enough about Greg Martnow and his, his partnership and collaboration to bring things forward. We both want to sit here and tell you and we want to be able to convey when we meet with all the boards and committees that we have a worst case scenario budget that does to the greatest extent possible protect the core services and is viable. Knowing that, in all likelihood, we are going to see additional funds come, become available over the coming months. And so if we have a town meeting in June, we could then have a, another fall town meeting to make adjustments if we see fit. If things look okay and we want to stay put and revenues become available from the federal government, those revenues could, if we don't hold a town meeting, the only thing those revenues could be used for would be to reduce the tax impact. So we've put, I believe, the town of Northborough and the boards and committees in the enviable position of bringing you a, a very difficult but reasonable budget that largely protects the services and the staff. There's just some minor cuts and trims that needed to take place. Clearly, there's postponement of things that we will need. When you postpone doing roadwork, it doesn't go away. When you postpone replacing equipment, it doesn't go away. So that is a short-term option for us. Certainly, one fiscal year is something that we could deal with. Had a long conversation with the chief police, the, the police chief about, you know, if he doesn't get those two cruisers that were planned, he will be able to deal with that. You can't just not replace cruisers indefinitely, just like you can't not replace DPW trucks indefinitely. But we believe that this is a good, short-term approach to bring in a budget that's balanced, that's fiscally responsible, that ultimately allows us the most flexibility to maneuver moving forward. So if, for whatever reason, we can't hold a special town, sorry, we can't hold an annual town meeting on June twenty second, and we, that means we're going to cross over the end of the fiscal year. We're going to need to take advantage of the emergency legislation that was passed, just like every other town that has special town meeting. This won't be unique to Northborough. I'm sorry, that has open town meeting. And we will have to adopt a 1/12 budget moving forward until such time as we can meet and hold the business of the town. It is possible that based on the emergency and the pandemic, that we may not be able to hold town meeting for two, three, four months. I can't tell you that right now. But what I can tell you is this path that we've laid out, this process and where we are and the work that's been done by the superintendent in all the departments, we're ready to go. We'd be ready to go on June 22nd and then we can sit in a holding pattern. Just like we brought to you a level service budget and a town meeting warrant on March 23rd to get a stake in the ground and then we sit in a holding pattern. We now are looking at this revised budget and revised articles. And we can sit in a holding pattern and we're ready to go whenever we, it is safely, or safely able to do so. So again, this information, this memo and the detail about the reductions on the general government side of the budget is available on the town administrator's webpage. The superintendent's K to eight and his regional high school budget reductions and presentations are available through their website and his office. And that is where we stand here and today. So I'm very pleased and I had to say the departments, the department heads, everybody has worked to bring this to the town. A fiscally responsible plan that looks at the worst case scenario and provides us with the most flexibility moving forward for whatever transpires. With that, I know I covered a lot of information, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the general government budget, the bigger picture or the process of how we move forward. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you very much, John. I appreciate it. I just want to take a moment to thank you, Finance Director Jason Little, the department heads and Superintendent Martino, because it has been a very arduous process over these last several weeks to try to understand the impacts, to, to forecast, as you have done, what might be waiting for us a little bit ahead with state or federal stimulus money. And, and meanwhile, put together something that fits within our framework, fits within the, the circumstances of the worst case scenario and lets us move forward as we need to, while still giving us flexibility leading into the latter half of the year. When stimulus money's become available and allow us a second chance essentially to reevaluate what our options might be at that point. So much appreciated all of the many, many hours, nights, weekends. It's, it's basically been around the clock and I certainly appreciate all the time and effort put into it. And the very high level of, of expertise and quality in the information that's been put together and delivered to us here. So thank you. Members of the board, do you have any questions? Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John, thank you very much for putting all this together. And again, thanks to, just to reiterate what Jason was saying, thanks to all the, the department heads. I'm, I'm happy to hear that, that everything's being done to, to protect jobs and make sure that, that, that people aren't going to be, be laid off. That has been no lie keeping me up at night. That is very concerning to me that this is going to have an, an impact on, on these people that have worked so hard and to, to get us into this place where, where we can have a balanced budget. I know I've, I've been, I think the hardest thing with this whole situation, I've, I've mentioned this before, is, is dealing with uncertainty. You just keep, you can't plan strategically when you don't know the variables that you're faced with. I've been helping my clients go through this and it's just, it's just very painstaking to come up with a, with a plan. So it's very impressive that you, what, what you guys have accomplished with this. And as I've been helping people go through this, I think the most important thing that we have coming out of this is flexibility. I think that is so important. You, you talk about other towns, they are locked into a position where they, they are upstream without a paddle, without this money, because they have no flexibility. And it's great to hear that the town is, is in a position to have some flexibility, to not be overly relying on getting the funds in from the state and federal government. But then when we do get them in, it puts a town in a, in a very enviable position of having options of what we can do with the money. So again, thank you for that, for this. Thank you for, for the work that you've done on this. Not just today, but all the work that everybody's done over the last 10 years to make sure the town is in the position to do this. So thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Any other members' comments? Leslie?
Yeah, I want to thank everyone as well. I know this is a lot of work, very difficult. I have one question and I think I probably know the answer. Typically we transfer to the OPEB trust 550K. We had some nice momentum going with that and I think obviously important because of the, the amount that's due for that. But has the state provided any guidance on OPEB handling or relief in the future? For OPEB, OPEB in particular?
No, as, through the chair, if I may, as you know, it has been a legislative priority of the board of selectmen for years. We have given very clear, very specific requests for OPEB reform. OPEB, by the way, for folks at home that maybe aren't familiar, is other post-employment benefits, essentially retiree health insurance. And so we have been given very clear guidelines to the state in terms of reform, much like pension reform, that the benefit should be earned over a period of time based on years of service and age and not once you hit 10 years of service, you have this benefit available to you. So we've given that unfortunately, there's been a lack of political will to make OPEB reform. But just stepping back now, I just want to, again, there's so many things that this community has done right over the last 10 years that put us in a, a better position than most. When, when, when the additional local option taxes became available for hotel and meals, we made a decision, again, these are flexible, elastic revenues that move with the economy, right? So in a recession, we know and we knew in a recession that hotel and meals taxes are going to reduce, right? Nobody could have foreseen a pandemic impact like this, other than Bill Gates, I suppose. But, but, but we weren't planning for a pandemic. We were planning for a recession, okay? We saw all, all the earmarks and the indicators coming. So, but when we used, when we took advantage of that local option and those revenues came in, we didn't use those revenues to expand services, to grow departmental services, right? We dedicated them to deal with long-term unfunded liabilities. And part of the wisdom of that is, listen, if a recession hits and these revenues take a dip, then we're going to have, we have options. It's not going to impact our, our teachers, our police, our fire, you know, right out of the gate. So when we lost, you know, probably three quarters of the hotel and meals tax because of the shutdown, we're postponing this unfunded liability. Now, the, probably the best analogy is, look, if you're in the very difficult and unfortunate situation to have been laid off or lost your job, the first thing you do is stop contributing to your retirement fund, right? That's just a basic necessity. So in this unique, difficult situation, that's the equivalent of us stopping to contribute to our other post-employment benefits. And, but, but they're not direct because of the way we've conservatively dedicated and earmarked these revenues. It has had less of an impact. Some, I'm not going to name communities, but if you read the paper, there are several communities larger than us along Route 9 that have a lot of hotels and a lot of restaurants. And they are having a very difficult time because those revenues pipe right into their operating budget and that's how they're funding police, fire, DPW and schools. We're not. And that was by design and that was by design many years ago. So again, just like we, just like we don't issue debt for a lot of our capital. We use one-time revenues and we don't bring too many of those one-time revenues in the operating budget. That's all by design so that when the economy shrinks like it is now and we close out, when we close out fiscal 20, right? The year that ends on June 30th, we are going to have the lowest free cash we have seen, our lowest budget surplus that we have seen probably since 2004. So if we were routinely using all that money and just loading the budget surplus from one year forward into the next year, we would be in dire straits right now and a lot of communities do that. We don't. We have a policy and for, and laid out why we don't do that. And, and so when that free cash dries up, we can postpone cruisers for a year or two, or we can find other ways to fund them. But we're not immediately in a crisis. So, I mean, I don't know of anybody else, any other community that would budget on the table, 17% reduction in state aid, 14% reduction in local receipts and say that they can bring a balanced budget into a town meeting that largely maintains services. So, you know, we're foregoing some things. And again, some of the stuff that we're foregoing, you can't do it in the long term. But we're also not gutting everything that we're doing either. And so we're buying, to Tim's point, everything that we've done, everything that we've done for the last 10 years in terms of policies, financial reserves, how we fund various things, how we use new revenues so that we don't become overly dependent on intergovernmental transfers or revenues that are really elastic and can catch you off guard like hotel and meals tax. So we, by design, we've handled these things really, really well. And to Tim's point, and we've had, what, three or four conversations along these lines, Tim, because you, because you're talking to your clients and you're like, what they need now more than anything is space and flexibility, room to maneuver while, while the, the things settle down, while the facts and the data shake out so they can make good, long-term maneuvers to whatever the new norm is going to be. We have that. Doesn't mean it doesn't pinch, it doesn't cause pain, but we have that. And that I think is going to be the defining factor for how you see us perceive versus a, a number of, of our, you know, area communities. And so some of it's luck. You know, we had excellent economic development in Northborough for several years. Rather than just let our budgets grow to match those new revenues, we taxed below the limits of Prop 2 and 1/2. Most communities can't, they struggle to live within the confines of 2 and 1/2 and they need an override because they can't maintain basic services without going above and beyond Prop 2 and 1/2. We have $2.17 million of excess levy capacity right now. And based on the budget that we've put together, working with the superintendent, this worst-case scenario, moving forward for fiscal 21, if no relief funds come, we would actually add $217,000 to that levy capacity. So this budget, as put together right now, doesn't even tax to the max of Prop 2 and 1/2. Okay, this is not a sustainable budget, guys. I got to be very clear to you about that. This is a budget designed to give us flexibility, room to maneuver, figure out a long-term strategy and plot a new course. That takes time, it takes data and it takes a lot of communication. First step in that communication, getting all the key policy boards and committees back into the same room on June 4th so they hear all this information, they ask, they can ask the questions, just like we do every year in December. And everybody has to feel like, yes, this makes sense, that this is, this is the right course of action. That is how we've managed ourselves for the last 10 years. And these policies, these procedures, this cooperation and collaboration, you don't see this everywhere else. Again, the superintendent has been at the table with Jason Little, the finance director, myself from day one. He's been as a part of our COVID task force from day one. He knows everything I know, I know everything he knows. And together we put together something that we bring to you and then we make sure that all, all of our boards and committees know what we know and everybody sees the same thing and we get agreement on the facts and the path forward. So that's what we've done for you right now. That's what we've laid out. Over the next couple of weeks, we're going to need to package this up. We may find ourselves in a holding pattern again, just like I said, on March 23rd, we gave you a level service budget and a town meeting warrant, knowing that more than likely we'd need to revisit it. Stake in the ground, this is a good place to be. Moving forward, we may need to revisit it. The biggest factor unknown right now, as I've said probably four times, is what are we going to see in federal stimulus money? So just history is a, always a good teacher. We look, look back, so in the worst recession in 80 years before this one, so 2008, 2009, we saw our state aid drop down significantly. When federal stimulus funds came in, what the state did is the state passed those through to the municipalities, held us harmless, they cut our state aid, but then backfilled, held us harmless, right? So our state aid got cut, but we got that stimulus money for that year. That's how they did it last time. This time is completely different because I've never seen it done like this in 25 years where they carve it up, some portion of it, based on your population. And by the way, you should all love that formula. Because the 500 million they distribute of the 2.7 billion they have available to them, they distribute it by formula, by population. If they run it through the cherry sheets and they run it through the chapter 70 school aid formula, we won't see any of it. It'll go, it'll be, it'll go elsewhere. So if we can keep that money and if they can open it up to us, we then have the ability to come back, talk about, what do you want to use the amount of one-time revenues for the fiscal 21 budget? What do you want to cut and what do you want to do for tax impact? And you have the flexibility to move those three things around till you get to a place like we do every December. When we look at all the financial data of the town, we say this is sort of the sweet spot. We believe we've done that for you right now pending this information regarding those, those federal funds. So we're in a, we're in a good spot for the spot we're in, as they say.
Very good. Thank you very much, John. I appreciate all the work and all the coordination and collaboration among all the participants here in trying to move us all together and accommodate all the needs from the various components of the budget. Any other questions from the board? Julianne?
Yes, so regarding the meetings coming up, the financial planning committee appropriations and then the, the big meeting, well, I assume that will be Zoom, a Zoom meeting?
Yes.
And will, will there be opportunity for questions from the public?
I think what the normal process that we follow every year is that, you know, the staff does, your professional staff does their job, right? Then we meet with the specific board and committee to get concurrence on this. And then there's a public hearing. So the one thing in that process that I outlined, that's in the memo I gave you, would have the, as we get through the, I, I think honestly, the meeting on June 4th with all the board and committee members, there's going to, I'm going to make a very long presentation. I'm just warning you right now, we have a lot of information to cover. The public can always send in comments to any board or committee they want. But the intention then would be at the selectman's subsequent meeting on June 8th, would be a public hearing on the budget. So again, it builds, it builds staff, the boards and committees, everybody getting on the same page, making sure they have the information and then public comment and then we go to town meeting.
So if someone had comments that they wanted to, to give to the financial planning committee, how would they do that?
They can, yep, they can email them if they want to send them, email them to me, my email address on the webpage. Send them in and we'll, we'll get them to the boards and committees. Certainly the board of selectmen's emails are all up on the webpage. I keep reminding people phones still work too. But this idea that the only way you can, you can provide input, it has to be at the meeting verbally. You know, that's not how the vast majority of, of information comes. It comes in the form of emails and, and letters and, and things of that nature. But this process that we outlined here would, would provide for at a, you know, public, specific public comment or public hearing regarding the budget. And then the ultimate public hearing, frankly, on the budget is town meeting itself.
Right. And I have one more question. So could you just explain the rationale that went into forming a budget now as opposed to doing the month-by-month budget and waiting for more information about federal, federal monies coming in, people's job security? For more information about federal, federal monies coming in, people's job security, unemployment could.
Sure, it's real, it's real simple. Um, it's real simple. And the answer is. You gotta deal with the facts that are on the ground before you right now. Facts on the ground are, we could be looking at a seventy percent reduction state aid and a fourteen percent reduction of local receipts. So we need to put a budget together that deals directly with those facts. If we get additional stimulus funds, and I don't know, if I were a betting man, I'd say, yes, it's going to come. But right now, I'm looking at one point three million dollars just out of reach. That under the federal regulations and rules, we cannot access except for direct expenses. Which are minimal on a relative basis. Like I said, maybe we have a hundred thousand dollars of direct expenses. But we've got one point six million dollars in lost revenues. That's where we need the money. So, you know, you can, if you're in a position where. In some towns are in this position where if they had to give you a budget right now, they'd say we need to lay off. Twenty five employees. Most people would say, well, hold on, let's, if we can, let's wait and see if we can get these other revenues. But right now, the only, the reductions that we've made are reductions that regardless of whether or not that money materializes. We're we're probably gonna stick with a lot of these uh cuts. Um, at least for the foreseeable future, next year or two. Because here's the other thing is. As much as I'm worried about fiscal twenty one, Jason Little and I, what do we spend most of our time talking about, Jason? Fiscal twenty two and fiscal twenty three. Yeah, because in fiscal twenty one, if these stimulus funds materialize and we're able to, and we're okay for fiscal twenty one. Do you think you're gonna get the same amount of help again in fiscal twenty two or twenty three? If the economy doesn't turn around and recover as fast as you'd like it to be? So you need to build in, back to Tim's comment, as much flexibility to maneuver as you possibly can. And so uh it would be, here here's the irony, it's like people have been screaming for the last month. You know, how come you that you haven't done this? How come you don't have a revised budget? How come you not? And I've said at every meeting, we're working on it and we're putting something together and it will be in place before we need it. And it it's, it is here, it's done, and it is placed before we need it. We can sit and we can hold. We always have that option. But we need to be prepared that if things don't get better, if those federal funds don't get released. Or a second round doesn't get approved, we need to be prepared as a community to move forward. In a financially responsible, balanced budget manner. That's why.
Good, thanks. That's it for me.
Thank you, Julianne. Uh, if I could, actually, Dawn, did you have a question? Uh, can you unmute?
John, I didn't hear anything about the stabilization fund. Um, do you care to talk about that at all?
Sure. So you're also seeing, if you're watching the papers, a couple of communities wanted to remove from us, talking about. Um, drawing down their stabilization fund. So stabilization, I guess, probably the best. I I always like to try to explain things and like as if someone were trying to explain this to me the first time. There's stable, our our financial reserves, the money that we have, that's not dedicated uh to a, to be expended in the upcoming fiscal year or the current fiscal year. Those are our financial reserves. They take two forms. One is a stabilization fund. And the other is free cash. Think of it as your savings account is stabilization and free cash is your checking, okay? So together, it's what you have for money on hand. The free cash, every year we take some of our free cash from our checking account and we put it into our savings account. And we try not to ever touch it, and we haven't had to touch it to this day. The checking account, then you spend it on things that you need, right? So normally, in a typical fiscal year, you would spend some of that free cash, that checking account to. For equipment replacement and capital items. That's what we do. You put some in, you put some in your savings account to make sure you're maintaining. Uh, on a percentage basis, ten percent, roughly eight to ten percent of your of your income. And then the balance, you're spending on things you need to maintain your physical assets, your home, your car, things like that. So that's what we do. Stabilization fund is what most people refer to as the rainy day fund. So the state has right now three point five billion dollars in their rainy day fund. They are drawing that down in fiscal twenty and twenty one. You're gonna see a lot of communities drawing that down. I'm not proposing here now that we touch. Uh, our stabilization fund. What we're talking about is in our checking account, the free cash. Instead of buying those cruisers and that loader and that pickup truck, we're gonna postpone those. And we're gonna leave a little bit more money basically unencumbered that we can use to help offset. Some of these centralized expenses, right? But also just have it available to us so that as we move into fiscal twenty two. We've got a little bit more cash on hand. Back to Tim's comment about liquidity and flexibility. That's what that gets us. So when we meet with the financial planning committee on Wednesday. We're right now, our capital budget and the articles that are included in the town meeting warrant. Calls for us spending about one point four million dollars of free cash on capital. We're gonna scale that back probably somewhere around six to seven hundred thousand. And we're going to use three hundred seventy eight thousand to help us out in this this upcoming budget. And leave the other, you know, roughly another uh three, four hundred thousand just in the checking account. So that when we get around to fiscal twenty two. We have those reserves sitting there if something further unexpected happens. But to your point, the question about the stabilization fund, it is available to us. You would tap into the stabilization fund if things were so bad that you needed that money to make your debt service payment. It's just like you'd go to your, you'd, if it, if you were experiencing financial uh constraints. Right? You would cut back on eating out, you'd cut back on entertainment, you'd postpone some. Maybe improvements around the house that weren't gonna cause you long term difficulty, right? And um. But if you couldn't make your mortgage payment, you'd reach into your savings account because you can't default on your mortgage. If we got into a really bad spot, we would reach into our stabilization fund. To to do things like pay for debt service or things that we don't have a choice to postpone. If you take out debt, you owe money, you have to pay it. So it's probably a lot longer answer than you were looking for, but right now, sitting here today, I don't see us. I don't see us uh having to draw down our stabilization fund in fiscal twenty one or twenty two. Unless something very radically different happens in what we're anticipating right now. And Jason, what do we have? A little over, just shy of five million dollars in stabilization fund, four point seven, something like that?
Under, uh, about four point nine million.
That's the interest earnings, because the money earns interest. So four point nine million is stabilization. And then uh, and then we have the uh free cash that's available to us as well.
That was as of March thirty first, though, by by the way, so we'll see how the investments go for the rest of the year, but um.
Don't wanna. Probably not gonna pull down big interest rates, but. But and again, this is the wisdom of the board of selectmen and the financial boards of committees. We have a policy that says we maintain financial reserves between five and ten percent. And our goal is to stay north of eight percent, really. And we have, we have done that consistently for the last ten years. That's why every year when we get free cash. We move two hundred thousand dollars over from from the checking account into the stabilization. To make sure that we're keeping those ratios up. And again, you can go back to the town's website. You can look at ten years worth of budgets. You're gonna have five years worth of financial trend monitoring. You'll see all these policies. You'll see the votes of the board of selectmen and the other committees. To do this, this is when it matters. The fact that you made those decisions and took those uh that those uh policies to heart. And implemented them years ago is why we're in the position we're in today. Liquidity, flexibility, room to maneuver and to try to outlast. I mean, what's the game, Tim, for businesses, right? You, you're trying to be the last business standing, right? If you're on the verge, if you're not well managed, if your finances aren't good, those are gonna be the businesses that fold and have the difficulty fastest. And the ones that are strongest will will last the longest. My goal for the town of Northborough for the last ten years is to make us as strong as we can. And we talk about our fiscal condition, not just abstractly. We measure it and we report it annually. And you can go back and look at the last time we did that in December of twenty nineteen. We talked about all these things. We talked about recessions that might be coming. We didn't talk about a pandemic, but we talked about difficult economic times that were on the horizon.
Thank you very much, John. Uh, I had uh one question, actually, I think Julianne, you had mentioned this, just a a little bit better understanding in the event. Um, that we were unable to hold the town meeting on uh June twenty second. And we carried over into the next fiscal year, FY twenty one. Uh, there's a. Procedure to operate on a month by month basis, uh on a kind of a one twelfth budget basis, roughly speaking. Uh, can you just talk about uh? Uh, that a little bit, um and probably particularly uh as to what the baseline uh would be for the one twelfth. Operating. Uh, we're not talking about the baseline being our current fiscal year twenty, right?
Yeah, it's not just a straight one twelfth budget. Uh, there are provisions that allow for contractual wage increases. Um, uh increases in assessments on things like pensions and health insurance. Um, so there is a, there is a process. Essentially, what will inform that process are those. Contractually obligated or otherwise obligated increases that get factored in. And then we would be looking at this budget that we're putting together now. It'll be a combination of one twelfth of this reduced budget, but providing for essentially those contractual increases. And uh, Jason and I spent probably uh a a half an hour, an hour today talking about this process. There's very limited guidelines, but the Department of Revenue is going to allow us to make a case for that one twelfth budget. And keep in mind too, your expenses for the year aren't one twelfth. There are sometimes, you know, it's just like your own personal life. Sometimes you pay your life insurance all upfront. You know, sometimes you pay things in two installments or four installments, not monthly necessarily. So all that stuff gets factored in and really it's up to us to put it one twelfth budget together. And the way the process works is we bring it to the board of selectmen, the board of selectmen have to approve it. And then we send it to the state and the state has to approve it. My understanding is that the Department of Revenue is going to be reasonable. In that, but we'll have to justify, you know, where we are. The fact that we're cutting. The fact that we're reducing our budgets on the front end here, like what I just presented to you, instead of a three and a half percent budget increase, it's a one percent budget increase. We should be fine bringing forward a one twelfth budget that the Department of Revenue is going to agree. We don't need the state to constrain us. We will manage ourselves. And provide you, the board of selectmen, with a reasonable budget to bring forward. That expect, that you can understand why it it makes sense. So and keep in mind. Even if you go through that one twelfth process for three, four months. You know, at some point, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to then adopt a formal budget at a town meeting. In the fall before you set the tax rate, so.
Thank you very much, John. Uh, any other questions by board members? Hearing none.
There's no action required by the.
Right.
Board this evening.
I was just gonna say to reiterate the uh, the meeting sequence from this point forward, if you could just.
Sure. So on Wednesday night, this Wednesday night, May twentieth, the superintendent will be presenting the revised. Algonquin Regional High School Budget and Assessment for the Town of Northborough. On Wednesday, May twenty seventh, the Financial Planning Committee, which has already completed their work. Uh, is going to revisit their recommended projects and staff will recommend postponing several of them to free up. The free cash for the plan that we discussed tonight. That will take place on May twenty seventh. On May twenty, uh, on May twenty eighth, which is the Thursday, the next night. Appropriations Committee uh is going to meet to hear the reduced budgets from K to eight, Algonquin General Government. Then on June fourth, which is roughly two and a half weeks from now. I would like to bring all the boards and committees back together because I strong, I strongly believe that people need to hear this information as a group. Ask the questions, get the answers, get agreement on the facts. You can have opinion about what you want to do about those facts. But get a pin, get agreement on the facts and and bring all these individual pieces. You've got the K to eight, the high school, the general government. Some one time revenues, our financial reserves. You need to see all this stuff put together and and then and a. Package and a presentation for you, so you have it all in front of you and it makes sense. And then hopefully you feel like that's something that you as a board or committee member can agree to. And then on June eighth, the board of selectmen will hold a meeting, uh your regularly scheduled meeting. And at that meeting, I anticipate you'd have a hearing on the budget and potentially vote your recommendations. And then on June twenty second would be town meeting.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that.
I don't know if that's how it's gonna play out, but that's the plan for the situation that we have uh before so far.
Sorry. Thank you. Uh, one last call. Any any further questions? Hearing none. We will continue. Next item is reports. Uh, Julianne, please.
Thank you. So first, I'd like to say a few words about Memorial Day. Next Monday, May twenty fifth, we will commemorate Memorial Day. The pandemic may change the way we honor our fallen veterans, but it does not change or alter our heartfelt gratitude to the members of our armed forces. Who have made the ultimate sacrifice. The commemorative plaque on our new memorial on the Northborough Town Commons quotes former US Representative Solomon Ortiz. And it says, "From the bitter cold winter at Valley Forge to the mountains of Afghanistan and the deserts of Iraq. Our soldiers have courageously answered when called, gone where ordered and defended our nation with honor." End of quote. "We will not be assembling the usual way that we have in the past for Memorial Day. But if I may suggest to residents to take a moment when you can. While maintaining social distancing and taking appropriate precautions, to spend a few minutes at our war memorials. And remember the sacrifices of the brave individuals we honor on this day." And I have a follow up from our last meeting where I did mention that I had a few questions and I have. I have refined those questions now. Um. The the first one I have and I uh is about communication. There was an email about asking about. How people can get information if they're not, uh, if they don't like to go on the website or can't go on the website. And I just wanna make sure that whenever we firm updates that we are going to use the electronic sign in town. That um, maybe, I think last year we used the email system that the school has, it's um. That that seemed to have worked out well and code red. And one other thing I thought of because I did get a call as the senior. Um, I was being checked on and luckily, everything is okay here. But I was wondering with these calls, if they're going to uh occur periodically, could. Um, the senior center assist people with signing up for code red? Any information about the election? So I don't know if you have any thoughts about that or?
Yeah, I just, just so we're clear, they have called thousands of people. And that has taken weeks to do. So we're not talking about elections. Those phone calls are made to make sure people have food and medicine. And they're okay. And so by necessity, they've been focused on those things. And um, and the goal was to make it through all of those, all of those calls. And there are. Uh, so last time I checked, it was over four thousand phone calls that had been made by staff. And so by necessity, we we wanna make sure people are okay. It's not, we don't, we cannot communicate to people by calling them one on one. So people have to make it, uh make some effort to read the newspaper, to, if they don't have access to the website, to watch local access. Or to, or to um. Uh, or to, uh, you know, uh, get information. The other thing too is keep in mind that if you have a question and you need information. We're still here. Every department is open, it's still staffed, email works, phone calls work. So TV, newspapers, phone calls, uh websites, social media, we hit it all. Um, but we can't call every individual person to tell them when the election is. I do, that's just not something that we reasonably could do.
Yeah, that I I don't think that's what I, I, you know, what I had meant. If I suggested that. Yeah, that, I, I don't think that's what I, you know, what I had meant. If I suggested that if the calls were going to happen periodically, if people had question, you know, obviously basic needs come first, but if people needed assistance with getting ballots or signing up for Code Red. But I understand what you're saying. It's a lot of phone calls and right now we don't even probably have a lot of time.
Julianne, I, I think the case has been, or the preponderance of experience has been that many of these people who are contacted indicate that they do have support from neighbors or friends or family. And that support system can assist them with these issues as well as the more basic needs that they might have required. So. So I think that there's some, you know, support and broad support in that sense that's available. Yes, John?
I just want to make one comment because, you know, I've got staff making these phone calls and they literally have made somewhere around over 4,000 calls. And I say to them, do people, when you meet, when you talk to folks, do they feel like they're getting information? Nobody's saying that are very, very few people, you know, it's really the population risk. But by and large, we've gotten more comments about people who are offended by things like, by people saying things like, I'm a senior and they act like I couldn't possibly use a phone, a, a, a computer. Look at you. You're a senior. You're on a Zoom meeting right now, right? Like the, the, the idea that seniors, some magical age, you be, you know, you go over 60 and all of a sudden, you, you, you just can't use a computer. We do, we do know that it's, it's less a factor of age. And I think it's more a factor of, of overall health and independence. And so we have a very good handle on our populations at risk. Those are the first people we call. In fact, we call those people every other day to make sure they're okay. And then we just made a sweeping phone call through the community just on the off chance. And we did, we picked up one or two, 4,000 phone calls. We picked up two, three people, maybe four people, like that's the amount. But you know what? For those people that we made contact with, it was important that we did so. And so then you would get them plugged into the system. So they're not isolated anymore. And, and we either call and check on them or they, they know where they can get, where they can get these resources. But this, this sense or this comment that's being put out there by a few people on social media that, that there's all these seniors that just don't know what's going on. It hasn't borne out from our outreach and I'm thankful for that. I'm glad we did the outreach and I'm glad we now know that in fact they are getting the information. And so, so it's a good thing, I, I think, because it bears out the fact that we are doing a good job communicating and that people are getting the information they need and they're getting the services that they need. And if you, and if they, if they get identified as somebody who is at risk for a variety of other reasons, not just because they're a senior, a senior doesn't mean all of a sudden you just can't take care of yourself. That those people, for whatever reason, again, then get moved into a different category for more frequent phone calls and follow-ups to make sure that they're okay. And that if they need anything, we're here for them. So by and large, it was, it was a really interesting exercise and I'm very pleased that we found that our folks are okay in that, but the few people we picked up, I'm glad we picked them up. It was worthwhile exercise.
Well, it's good to know that they're getting, that they feel that they're getting the information. That's fantastic. Okay. So the second thing is, and we did get a late question. I don't know if that was going to be addressed at the meeting about in the event that John, you would take a well-deserved vacation or had an emergency, the, the hierarchy of what would happen in terms of town leadership. And on that topic, have, have we looked at hiring an assistant town administrator much as, as in an interim fashion as we have with the health agent and the senior, senior center?
Okay. So a couple of questions. Let me start with the first one. We have coup plans, continuity of operation plans for every department, including the town administrator's office. If something should happen to me, the succession plan is my, the finance director would become the acting town administrator. He would be appointed the acting town administrator. And then ultimately, what would be more than, most likely would happen if, if I'm just sick for a week or I go on vacation, I would designate the finance director in the absence of an assistant as the, as the acting town administrator. If it was, I get hit by a bus, I can say, because it's talking about myself, but I get hit by a bus, Jason becomes the acting, the board of selectmen then would hire an interim town administrator more than likely. But as you will know, the, the, the long-term approach here is to get the assistant town administrator position filled. So I have engaged the consultant that we used for the senior center recruitment process to begin a recruitment process for the assistant town administrator vacancy. Now we already did, we did one in the fall. It, it didn't bear out a good fit for us. And before we can go back out again, you all know what happened. The emergency struck and basically we've been dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic. But now that we're through the surge and starting to talk about reopening plans, it's appropriate that we, that we start a, a new process to get a, a full-time assistant town administrator hired. One of the issues that we face right now is, you know, the assistant town administrator is the HR director. I don't know any, you know, 70 million health corporations that don't have a full-time HR person. So I've been doing all the HR, working with Jason to do the finance, also handling the emergency. Trust me. I am very interested in, in making sure that we get an assistant town administrator in place. Like all of these recruitments, we want to make sure we get the right person, but that process is beginning, is beginning anew again. So it's not like we didn't try, but we're going to start that, that process has already begun. And I appreciate, can I just say, I appreciate that the board understands the critical nature of that position and the need for it.
And okay, this is just my last question. And it's actually a request to put on the agenda for an upcoming meeting. I, there was an email at our last meeting about specifically asking for a more connected and involved economic development committee. And I believe the answer was that, that that's in the master plan and will happen with the master plan implementation. But seeing what's going on, I, I, I wonder if we can have some discussion and information about that for our next meeting because that might, that might be a while and I'm not. So is, is that possible?
I'll take it under advisement, Julianne. I think in the circumstance here where we are right now, there's a combination. If, if you're talking about a committee, then I'm uncertain where, where that goes in the near term or the short term, I should say. Until we've gotten through town meeting and gotten some of our budget situation through the fall resolved. It would be something that would additionally require staff support. And with everything stretched to the limit as it is, I don't see that we have capacity among the existing staff to provide that support at this time. So. I'll take the request under advisement for the moment, but I can't say right now that we would certainly have it on the next agenda for consideration or debate.
Okay. That's it for me.
Yep. Thank you, Julianne. Leslie?
Okay. As always, I have people I want to thank. It's, it's pretty much the same list as last time, but I think, you know, we're remiss if we, we don't do this as often as we can. Our first responders and our police and fire chiefs, and I want to make note that this is EMS week. Is that correct? Chief Parenti from the 18th through the, or 17th through the 23rd? Yes. Okay. So that's, that's wonderful. And that's great timing, obviously. All of our town staff, including the senior center director, DPW director, a family news services finance director, health agent, the school department and their continuing efforts to get lunches to kids during the week, Monday, Wednesday and Friday. I can test, can attest to all that because I live right by the high school and I see those buses pull in and I see them pull out. And I think cafeteria staff are there early in the mornings to get those things prepared. And there's a lot of work on the part of a lot of people to get that going. I know Sirloin Catering is doing a wonderful job. Northborough Food Pantry, the Cable Access Department, our trash hauler does a wonderful job. I, I'm guessing that the bulky stuff is pretty much done at this point, that if people have used their stickers for now, they cannot buy anymore. So that our trash haulers are not picking up large items like that, is my understanding. The town clerk in the quarter, 9495 Chamber of Commerce, and reaching out and doing small business work is obviously very, very important. And MIS David Kane, I want to thank him as well. I also want to say good luck and best wishes to the Algonquin High School class of 2020. I, you know, I, again, living next to the high school, I, I look over there a lot and I, I do feel a sadness for them. But under the circumstances, I know the school department is doing what it can. So I know that plans are underway and I think maybe evolving a little bit. I know they want to keep people happy, but they have to make sure that the proper constraints are in place and people are safe. But I, I do know that plans are, are being worked on. I attended another MMA webinar. Those are very informative, hosted by Jeff Beckwith. You know, there, it's not really a lot of new information because a lot of the things that they talk about are discussed by Charlie Baker and his press update. So it's not really new information, but I think it's great that they're trying to get people together to hear the, a lot of these things. And they discuss a lot of the legislation that's being pursued that has come out by the state. So it's always interesting to hear. Um, I attended another meeting about the start time for the school district. The, there is a proposal that I think will be in front of the school committee shortly to have Algonquin actually starting at eight as opposed to 7:20. And I think trying to keep elementary schools about the same and middle school as well. So I think it's been very difficult exercise in trying to get the buses to work out. And they're also going to have a required parent sign up to let the district know if their child will be riding the bus. So I think that if, if the child does not get signed up initially and plans change on the part of the family, they can sign up later. But that's going to be a new requirement. And lastly, I attended another webinar where the Algonquin principal finalist, Sean Beavens, introduced himself. I did a fantastic job. He used to be a, the English teacher at Algonquin a few years ago, when two of my kids were, were there, very, very, very well thought of and very well respected individual. So as of now, he is the principal finalist. So I wish him a lot of luck. So that ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also wanted to congratulate the class of 2020. It's quite the achievement to graduate high school, especially under these circumstances. Thinking about what those, the, the senior class had to give up this year because of everything that's going on. It, it was quite a sacrifice by those, by those kids to keep our community healthy and safe. Those are some of the once in a lifetime things that, that, that you'll miss out on. And I just wanted to get, extend my gratitude to all the seniors that, that made that sacrifice. And I also, I also wanted to acknowledge all the kids in town. You know, I've, I've mentioned multiple times, I have my kids of, of my own and the impact that this has had on kids and missing out on schooling and friends and playtime and you know, we're all a little bit older and you, you look back at your, your youth and those are times that you just can't, can't recapture. And they're making quite the sacrifice. So I just wanted to acknowledge and, and thank all the kids in town for, for the sacrifices they're making to keep, keep their community safe too. And as we go through this, I just wanted to, you know, again, remind people to, to support local businesses as much as possible. You know, Charlie Baker announced the, the phases today. The businesses are still in crisis. As much as you can support businesses by any means possible, please do that. And lastly, I just wanted to remind everybody that we do have an election coming up. Please, please vote. It is critically important that people vote this year. I wanted to thank and congratulate the 225 people that, that Andy Dove mentioned that had already requested mail-in ballots. That's 225 people. That means there's about 10,500 people that have not requested their ballot yet. 225 people is about 2% of the registered voters in town. So we still, you know, it's still six weeks away, but please, please participate, please vote. It is important. That ends my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. Don?
Yeah, I'd just like to also say to the class of 2020, these are challenging times and I feel bad about what's happened to the class and congratulations to all of them though, for their success stories. The other thing that I'd like to do is ask Scott, the DPW director, to please comment about the water issue that he sent out of, I noticed about today as far as running the water and businesses that have been shut.
Certainly, Don. So EPA released some information that was sent out via Town News. When drinking water sits stagnant in pipes, it loses its disinfecting qualities through chlorine. It can be unsafe to drink. It smells. We have a lot of businesses and buildings that have been vacant and not in use for, for quite some time. As businesses reopen, it's important that landlords and tenants understand to run their water clear. You know, you'll, you'll see the difference. You know, you run your finger through it, the water will be the temperature of the building. Keep running until it hits that 50 degree range. That way you know it's coming out of the, out of the water mains. It's five feet underground. It'll have adequate disinfection and it'll be clean and safe to drink. You know, that includes all the faucets in, in your building. Just because you do the one farthest away doesn't mean the ones in between aren't, aren't taken care of. You have a a lot of pipes running through your walls. Make sure you pull every fixture out, showers before you, before you try drinking or using the water.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Don. I'll just add my appreciation for the class of 2020. Very difficult circumstance here and it's particularly difficult when you look around and see what other communities might be doing in terms of their graduation celebration and you see disparities. It's, it's the only thing I can suggest is that it, it certainly is the intention of the school district to do what they can, what they feel they reasonably can do and safely can do. And, and they'll just try to, try to make it the best experience under the circumstances that can be done for the graduates. Appreciate all that they've done. There have been a lot of loss of spring sports, loss of spring events that aren't taking place this year. I've been a longtime volunteer for the overnight junior prom, post-prom party at the Newland Sports Center. And that's, that's something that I won't be doing this year. So I understand the gap that people feel in what they were expecting, what instead they're getting. So. The next thing I'd like to mention is, as Tim just said, supporting your local businesses to the, to the extent that you're able to, with the relaxing of some restrictions from the governor, there may be somewhat more opportunity to do that. And we certainly encourage people, you know, in, in compliance with safety guidelines and everything to do what you can to support our local businesses. Much appreciated. It's been mentioned previously, it's I believe posted on our website, but I just want to remind people that this coming weekend is, would be normal. Normally our Memorial Day observance and that will not be taking place this year. We will not be having the procession through the memorials as we typically do on this day. There is a team that will be going through, visiting the memorials, placing the wreaths. All of this will be recorded on video. And then additionally, there will be some other submissions and for the Memorial Day observance, what we'll have is essentially a, a virtual observance, a digital observance that will be available on local media access for people to view and, and make the appropriate acknowledgement for the occasion. So. Just keep your eyes open for, for information about that and expect to see that coming. Combined with that or related to that, I just want to congratulate Justin Souza, our Director of Veteran Services. Justin was featured in the Telegram article on May 12th. Uh, Justin was featured in the Telegram article, um, on May twelfth. Justin served in the Massachusetts Army National Guard from two thousand and seven through two thousand and fourteen. And served the tour, uh, in Afghanistan in two thousand and eleven as a combat medic. Um, he's currently our Director of Veteran Services and the, uh, profile kind of looked back on his experiences. And how they informed what he's doing today to provide services to our veterans, uh, uh, you know. Working from his own experience and understanding what some of those needs are. So. Uh, thank you, Justin, for what you're doing. Uh, we appreciate, uh, everything that's, uh, uh, taking place on behalf of our veterans. And then finally, uh, I received a communication from, uh, Liz Nolan and Alyssa Deegan, who are the. Uh, Northborough, Southborough Special Education Parent Advisory Council co-presidents. Uh, normally this time of year, there is a, um. A reception for the recipients of the annual Go the Distance Awards. Uh, these are for, uh, school and staff members, um, and members of the community who are nominated by the families. To celebrate the positive impact they have made in the lives of special needs students. Um, they're unable to have that celebration in person this year, uh, but there were twenty-nine recipients. Uh, and the information, uh, about those recipients can be found on the, uh, the website. W W W dot N S P A C dot org. Um, I'm just going to take a moment and actually walk through the recipients by name. It's, uh, certainly a very, uh. Important contribution that they make. And so I'll just walk through those here. For, uh, community members, we have Sandra Ulysses, uh, CrossFit instructor at Westboro Tennis and Swim Club. Nick Alcock, uh, Alcock, uh, ARHS student in the Best Buddies Club. For the Albert S Woodward Memorial School, Lisa Goulet. For Algonquin Regional High School, Colleen Ferguson, Carolyn Flynn, Rebecca Haberman. Sherry Nolan Hess, Selvi Oyola and Felicia Ruttigliano. For Fanny E Proctor School, Sean Gillespie and Sarah Phillips. For Margaret A Neary School, Nicole Bellows and Debbie Engel. For Margaret E, Marguerite E Peasley School, Carrie Brooks. For the Marion E Z School, Susan Berger, Michelle Delaire and Joanne Gorham. For the Mary E Finn School, Maureen Sullivan Falzone. Anne Thurber, Elizabeth Tingloff and Kathy Wilson. For the P Brent Trotter Middle School, Matt Castle, Sandra Heberly. Gretchen Hibbin, Jody Noble, Stephanie Palmer. And finally, for Robert E Melkin Middle School, Ellen Ferrera Tobin, Mark Jeffroy and Ronald Kurtz. Uh, these are the people who've been nomin- uh, nominated for the Go the Distance Award, uh, recognition of their contributions. Uh, and the positive impact they make on the lives of special needs students. We thank them, uh, for these important contributions. Uh, and we, uh, urge people to, um. To visit the website and, uh, and see some of the activities and some of the recognition that's going on there. There is a slideshow available there as well. So that concludes my report. Uh, John, anything?
Uh, just a couple of quick things. Um, we did make reference today to the governor's, uh, advisory board. Providing some initial information about the reopening and the phase reopening of the economy. So. We are reviewing these, uh, but the initial first blush, uh, seems to indicate that, uh. Most of our buildings and services are going to be, uh, more than likely locked down through the end of June. So, um, so we will review that and, uh, we are working, uh, Scott Sharptier, DPW director. Is actually chairing our reopening committee. Uh, he's doing an excellent job for us. Um, but, uh, I don't see our buildings and our services, uh, of many of the services that are shut down at the moment. Uh, coming back online before the end of June at the absolute earliest and that would be in a phased, uh, approach. So, um, uh, so we, we will be making decisions. Probably tomorrow, the staff is going to convene again. We're going to make some decisions about some of our summer recreational programming. Uh, activities, uh, because I think it's going to be very challenging for us to, uh, proceed with, uh, with a lot of those activities. Um, so more information will, will be forthcoming as we get our own Northborough specific reopening, uh, plan together. We'll be sure to communicate that to the board and to the public at large. And then just very briefly, the very last thing I want to mention is, you know, um, I always present the budget stuff. And I'm usually the spokesperson for the work that is done by our department heads and, uh, and really the. The person I need to acknowledge very strongly tonight is Jason Little, the, uh, Finance Director. Uh, we've been working nights in through weekends, uh, through entire weekends. To go line by line and, uh, the department heads are responding after hours and on weekends to get us the information that we need. To put the budget together that we have for the, for your consideration tonight. Um, I just want to acknowledge just an incredible amount of work and time that Jason's put in over the last, particularly the last month. Um, without, uh, without his help, there's no way we'd be in the position that we are. So just want to make sure I, I publicly acknowledge him so that he. He continues to show up every day and, uh, and, and do the work I keep piling on the end of his desk. So thank you, Jason. Right?
That's all I have. Thank you very much, Jason, for all the, the work, uh, being put in here. Uh, this brings us to public comment. The, uh. Um, if there are any attendees connected to our Zoom call, uh, you should have a facility to raise your hand. If by phone, star nine, uh, if by Zoom application, uh, there should be a button indicating a raised hand. Uh, available to. Going once. Going twice. And sold. Okay. We thank the attendees for viewing the meeting. Apparently, uh, no one, uh, has something they want to offer at this time. Uh, next item is, uh, the next meeting date, uh. For the Board of Selectmen, John, did we already cover that essentially or?
So your next meeting, your, your next meeting date is, uh, June eighth for your regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, however, just for the board, uh, planning purposes, please hold June fourth, which is a Thursday at seven PM for that joint meeting that we're putting together. Invitations will go out to the boards and committees, uh, tomorrow.
Very good. Thank you. And the next item is approval of cemetery deeds one zero nine six and one zero nine seven. Do I have a motion?
Mister Chairman, I move the board vote to execute cemetery deeds one zero nine six and one zero nine seven.
Moved and seconded, uh, again, a voice vote for all votes. Julianne?
I.
Leslie?
I.
Tim?
I.
Dawn?
I.
And I vote I, carries unanimously. And then finally, any other business to come for the board?
No other business this evening, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn. Is that somebody's dog?
Moved.
Sorry. Second.
Mine. I have a second. I have a second. Uh, moved and seconded to adjourn. Julianne?
I.
Leslie?
I.
Tim?
I.
I vote I to adjourn. Uh, thank you all very much, uh, board members and staff members who are here throughout this lengthy call. Appreciate it, uh, appreciate the attendance, uh, uh, people tuning into our meeting tonight as well. Uh, we are concluded. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Thank you.